Okay.
Yeah, get started. Thank you, everyone, for attending the Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission will continue to hold meetings remotely via Zoom until such time that is determined that it is safe to meet in person. So we ask, please know that we want to hear from you. If you're in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment for the item on the agenda, please use the raise your hand button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. When it is your turn to speak, planning staff will call your name. They will unmute you and give you, and you will be given three minutes to address the commission. If you're joining us by telephone, you may address the commission during public comment by pressing nine or star nine, and staff will address you and unmute you. You will also be given three minutes to address the commission. Please note, anyone in the attendance may only speak once per agenda item. If we could do a roll call, please.
Chairman.
President.
Vice Chair DeRosa.
President.
Commissioner BSI.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
President.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Coon.
Here.
And Commissioner Leff.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Johnson, would you be kind enough to lead us in that?
Yes, I will. And place your hand up your heart and join me in our allegiance to the flag, United States.
The tape of America.
And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Give me a moment. Every time we go to the flag and come back, I lose like half my panel. Here we go. Okay, great. Okay, next on the agenda is we have approval of the minutes from our special meeting last week. Does anyone wish to make any changes or amendments to the minutes? If not, can we get a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes of the January 12th meeting, or I can second Marco's motion either way.
I'll second as well.
Okay, great. Christie, if you could lead us in a vote to approve, please.
Chair Madden.
Yes.
Vice Chair DeRosa.
Yes.
Commissioner BSI.
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Coon.
Aye.
Commissioner Leff.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Seven zero zero zero.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving along. Next is item number five on the agenda. Are there any public comments for any items not on the agenda? Looks like we have about five people in the audience, so if you do have something you want to bring up, please just raise your hand or hit star nine. If not, we can proceed. Few seconds. Okay. Let's move on to item number six, which is announcement of conflicts of interest. Does anyone on the commission have any conflicts of interest for tonight's item, which is just one item, four sixty Chestnut Avenue? Okay, does not appear to be any conflicts of interest, so we can move forward to item seven on the agenda, which is public hearing. Item A, four sixty Chestnut Ave. Staff, if you would like to present the issue at hand.
And Christie will be providing the presentation this evening.
All right. Thank you.
All right, good evening, any commissioners, and thank you for joining us this evening. This item is a third story addition in a residential neighborhood. The property we are looking at tonight is four sixty Chestnut Avenue. For this third story addition, two permits are required. A conditional use permit is required for projects resulting in the addition of a third story and for projects resulting in a height that exceeds the height restrictions. Four sixty Chestnut is located between Genevieve Avenue and Niles Avenue. It's a typical 5,000 square foot lot. There is no adjustment factor required to calculate further. And because the property has a slope of 20.5%, the maximum floor area is decreased to 2,500 square feet. The maximum lot coverage is 2,000 square feet. And the maximum impermeable area is 4,000 square feet. Currently, the property is a two-story, single-family home with a gross floor area of 1,954 square feet. This calculates to a floor area ratio of roughly 0.39. The lot coverage is 1,594 square feet. And there are two bedrooms and two bathrooms in the home. Here are some photos of the subject property. Chestnut Avenue slopes down towards Beach Avenue, so there are quite a few homes like four sixty Chestnut that include a lower level, which is not visible from the street. Currently, the home has a one-car garage and an existing paved driveway. Properties directly adjacent include two-story homes on both the left and right side of the home, as well as across the street. Properties nearby include two-story homes along the street and driving down Chestnut Avenue from Niles Avenue. The main floor of the subject property meets the street level and appears to be a one-story home. This slide shows four ten Chestnut Avenue and existing two-story home on the street level, four ten reaches a height of 26 feet and three inches. Now we'll go over the proposed project. The project includes a proposed third story consisting of a 475.25 square foot addition and a proposed two-car parking lift. The proposed height at the street level will reach 20 feet and nine inches. The car lift will increase the number of covered parking spaces from one space to two spaces. The lot coverage remains the same at 1,594 square feet. And the proposal will result in three bedrooms and three bathrooms. The table on the right includes our zoning requirements, existing conditions, and proposed conditions. The FAR beginning at 0.39 will increase to 0.49. The gross floor area beginning at 1,954 square feet will increase to 2,429.25 square feet. The site plan shows no changes to the building footprint. The proposed upper floor is shown in the diagonally dashed area. There is also an existing deck on the right side of the home that measures 266.5 square feet. This slide shows all three levels side by side. The crawl space is shown in red. And on the upper floor, the pink area highlights the space that exists above the crawl space. There will be no changes to the lower level as shown here. The main floor of the home will see two major changes. The first change will be the removal of the existing closet to accommodate the creation of the second staircase heading to the third story. And the second change will be the increased height of the garage to accommodate the proposed car lift. The proposed third story includes a master bedroom, a master bathroom, a walk-in closet, and an alcove. Additionally, seven new windows are proposed. Next, we will look at the site elevations. Pursuant to San Bruno Municipal Code Section 12.200.030, a conditional use permit is required for a third story where any part of the three stories lie within the same vertical plane. In the pink, you'll notice that the front half of the addition is built above crawl space, which would appear to be two stories at the street level. In the blue, I've highlighted the rear half of the addition. This part of the addition lies within the same vertical plane, and because it is proposed in the rear of the home, it would not be visible from the street. Pursuant to San Bruno Municipal Code Section 12 by 200.030, a request for a conditional use permit for a project with a proposed third story where any part of the three stories lie within the same vertical plane can be approved through the Planning Commission. On this slide, we'll go over the height of the building. So for this property, the maximum height is 26 feet because it is a downsloping lot from front to rear with an average slope of 20.5%. The height of building is, excuse me, the height of buildings is defined as the vertical distance from the average level of the highest and lowest point of that portion of the lot covered by the building to the topmost point of the roof. The highest point is shown in pink and the lowest point is shown in blue. The distance between those two points is shown in green. Starting from the midpoint of that distance, we draw a vertical line in red to mark the maximum height of 26 feet. In this scenario, the addition reaches a height of 26 feet and seven inches. The portion of the roof exceeding the maximum height is shown in yellow. Pursuant to San Bruno Municipal Code Section 12.96.060, a request for a conditional use permit for a project which exceeds the permitted height can be approved through the Planning Commission. Now going over elevations. The front elevation will see the addition of two windows on the third floor and one window on the garage. The addition of the third story will increase the height of the building to 20 feet and eight inches at the street level. Looking at the residential design guidelines, staff find that the second story addition complies with the daylight plain and incorporates facade articulation. In addition, the project exceeds recommended second-story side setbacks. The rear elevation will have two additional windows visible, one window above the stairwell and another window in the master bedroom. The proposed height will reach 32 feet and half an inch. On this southwest elevation, the project proposes two additional windows, one along the stairwell and the other in the alcove. On the northeast elevation, the project is proposing one window in the master bedroom. After public comments at the ARC meeting on December 15th, 2022, the applicant provided a revised set of plans that interest concerns of height. The applicant has provided these revised plans, but would prefer an approval take place on the initial plans. And just to review again, the height of buildings is defined as the vertical distance from the average level of the highest and lowest point of the portion of the lot that is covered by the building to the topmost point of the roof. The revised plans have lowered the roof from 26 feet and seven inches to exactly 26 feet, which now complies with the maximum building height set forth for a downsloping lot with a slope greater than 20%. In addition, the overhang on the rear has been extended to accommodate the structural impacts of lowering the overall height. The other side of the extended overhang. Based on sap, based on analysis, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the architectural review permit, AR 22 dash zero eleven and use permit UP 22 dash zero zero seven based on the following findings. The project conforms with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning code and general plan because the design of the addition is compatible with neighborhood character. The project conforms with the character of the neighborhood based on the use of similar materials and design of neighboring homes. The project will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. And lastly, the project creates an attractive building environment because it includes a variety of building styles and designs such as stepbacks, incense, roof overhangs, varied roof lines, and material changes to break up the mass of the home. And that is all for this item. We can open the floor to questions.
Thank you, Christie. Great job, as always, on the presentation. Any comments or questions to staff from the Planning Commission? Are us?
I know you briefly mentioned the height of another building, I believe, on the same block. Did we establish that there is a building that, as viewed from the street, is taller, like on that same block already? Leaving aside the like lot slope calculations?
Let me just make sure I'm looking at the correct slide here. This is the slide you're referring to?
Yep.
I did not get a chance to go out there since the ARC meeting. But these plans have been taken from our track it. So in the microfiche, this was a recent, shouldn't say recent, but within the last decade, this house was approved at 26 feet and three inches.
And that looks to be, I mean, at least based on that drawing, a relatively flat lot, and so presumably from the street it is. What did you say? I mean, it's, it sounds like it is significantly taller from the street view.
Right, so from, let me make sure I get this right. So yes, from the street view, this existing two-story is two, is 26 feet and three inches. And the project at four sixty Chestnut is going to reach 20 feet and nine inches. At its proposed height.
Quite a bit less. I meant like a quarter less or something, right? If I'm doing math in my head, right, it's like more than 25% less. Anyway, that's, I just wanted to establish that because I mean, in terms of the, you know, the question of whether the height of this is out of place with approving that extra seven inches, that that seems like a relevant point. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Fisher. Any other commissioners with questions to staff?
Through the chair.
Yeah, I, I don't have a question, but I did want to think, thank you, Christie, for putting together the slideshow. It was really, it helped to illustrate what we're debating right now, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Mr. DeRosa, did you have questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, I'm a little intrigued by the car lift. I, I don't think I've ever in my life in short time on the planning commission had anybody propose one of those. I don't think I've ever seen one myself, other than on TV. Is there, I'm just surprised, and apparently, um, apparently you don't, that there's not an additional permit or anything required to ensure maintenance or safety on something like that. It just seems really dangerous. Is there nothing parallel required? I would imagine like a mechanic shop would have to have a particular permit for that. Is that not required here at all for something of that nature?
So, yeah, I can respond to that. First, I can just respond to the need for the lift. We, the, our municipal code was updated in 2021. And recently, we also adopted some parking design standards. So between those two, the one provision is that if, if you're do, if you are at it, doing an addition to your home of more than 250 square feet, and you are required to have two parking spaces, and those spaces can be in the garage and in the driveway. However, if your driveway length is less than 18 feet, you cannot consider your driveway as your second parking space. So in consultation with the applicant, because the addition is over 250 square feet, we suggested the, the car lift as a solution to allow for the addition. So with that, first of all, it will require, you know, bu, a building permits along with the with the home itself. There will also be a covenant recorded against the property to maintain the car lift as well. So those are the, those will be the two provisions that we'll have regarding the car lift.
Thank you, Michael.
I had a quick response on the car lift issue, which I don't, were you in, in the ARC meeting about this? Kelly?
Oh, me, no, I'm sorry, I was not.
This, this came up at the ARC meeting, and there was some conversation around it because of the amount of the house that's getting its height raised. This is the part that projects forward the most, and it, it was funny because some of the neighbors, I think, would have preferred that that expansion of the height that's closer to the street not get done. And it's a thing that the city is requiring and, you know, costs the homeowner money. And so there was some conversation around whether they might consider applying for a variance, but it seems like they decided to just go ahead with it because applying for a variance is itself additional discretionary process with delays and pitfalls of possibly being denied.
Right. Thank, thank you for filling me in on that. I appreciate it. No, I'm, I'm interested to hear public comment. But if, if I could, Chair Madden, just address some of Commissioner DeRosa's questions about the car lift.
Yes, please proceed.
Um, so back when we were looking at the Mills Park project, they were relying heavily on the use of car lifts for parking primarily for the residential area, but I think also a little bit for the commercial in that building. And I was really, it was very new and very weird to me, and I was very skeptical. And I imagined my children being crushed in this contraption. So thankfully, staff put together a little field trip out to Berkeley. And we were able to go and visit a residential building that had used this for, I think, all of their units had, had these lifts. And we got to saw, see it in action. We got to, you know, experience how it worked, and I was actually really pleased with the safety features of it. It did not seem like something that was extraordinarily dangerous, the way that I had imagined it being. I think it's really interesting to see it as a solution in a single-family home, but I don't think, given the nature of impacted parking on our streets, I don't think it's something we should. I think it's something we should entertain and think about. I think it's very, I think it's a creative solution. So anyway, that's my experience.
Thank you, Commissioner Leff. Any other commissioners with questions to staff or comments? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands at this time. So now I'd like to open it up for public comments on this item. It looks like we have about five people in attendance. If you would like to speak on this issue, please use the Zoom tool and raise your hand or press star nine on your telephone if you'd like to speak and staff can let you, it looks like we have Roberta Hannibal is first on my list here to speak, followed by Fred Strathby and David Stafford. So if hear from these folks, that'd be great.
Permission to speak. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you, I hear me now? Yes.
We can hear you.
Yeah, so one, I'd like, I'd like to thank everybody for modifying the design. I'm not sure why the design wasn't shown, but I really liked the modification, and any reduction in height would be great. So I still object to this design on the grounds that it is unnecessarily large for a single-family home and blocks a beautiful view for the neighbors on the west side of the street. And I have three more comments. First, the package states that the neighborhood that surrounds the subject properly shares a similar architectural building style. The one architecture, architectural feature the houses have in common on the west side of the street on this part of the block are large windows to enjoy a view of the bay. Therefore, building additions on the east side of the street directly conflict with the architectural building style on the west side of the street. And I wanted to comment on four ten Chestnut in particular. It's actually a couple of houses, maybe five or six houses away from, from four sixty Chestnut Avenue. So it's not really indicative of the houses right near four, four sixty Chestnut Avenue. So on four ten, the, the street actually doesn't slope as much from the, from the east to the west side of the street. It actually doesn't slope at all. So even if four ten Chestnut was a single story, it would still block the view. So it's actually a very different situation than four sixty Chestnut. I guess I was also concerned about the lift system. So I really, you know, I was curious about Commissioner Leff then had a comment, and I was wondering if there was any data on how people use those lifts, and if they actually use them like on a daily basis, or if they only use them if they're like pressed to find a parking spot. So I think on our street, we have enough parking spots where if the lift is hard to use, people won't use it. And then my third, my third and final comment is that I request that if this is, this building is going to be happened, which again, I, I don't approve of because of blocking the views. Could you please, please keep it to 26 feet? I don't see why it's so hard to reduce the height a little bit, just, you know, to, to give the residents across the street something. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, whenever you're ready, Christie.
Okay, we have our applicant, Fred Strathby. Fred, you have permission to speak.
I think you need to unmute Mr. Strathby.
I've given him permission to talk. Fred, whenever you're ready.
Did I say, I said wrong button? Yeah, after the design review meeting, we were looking at options to see what it would take to the height. As it turns out, because the width or the height of the roof is actually determined by the width rather than the depth, the shaving off of the back helps from a side view, but it doesn't help from a front view. So and it, and again, it's just based on the width of that third floor. We look to indent the upper floor wherever we could and to come up with a reasonable-sized room without going kind of overboard. And if we had to, let's say, narrow the depth of the house on that level by three feet, it would really greatly impact the, the master bedroom. I've used car lifts before. In fact, in the city of Berkeley is the first time I used it. It was on a multifamily project. And that was a number of years ago. And there have been no incidents that have occurred because of that. So that was, that was good. But, and it seemed like about the only practical way to get an additional parking space because otherwise we would have had some kind of a tandem situation. We didn't have the option of bringing the garage forward or widening it without greatly impacting the house. So certainly would be happy to answer any, any questions that you have.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Morris.
I have two questions. One, I'm just looking at the design again, and so to get this seven-inch reduction, you kind of shaved down the back part of the upper story, and so is that basically like that difference in height is more or less invisible from the street?
Right. If you look at the section and compare it with the, or the side elevation, which is ever easier.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking right now at the side elevations. It's page 35 in the packet.
Okay. If you look at the ridge line, you'll see at the front of both versions, the the hip in the front meets at that same height. As you go back in the house, immediately on the revised version, it starts right at that intersection and starts down. It means that the plate height in the back has dropped and indent's about three feet. and indent's about three feet. So you kind of shaved off the roof, the back about three feet in order to achieve the twenty six feet.
Do you mind if I ask what the, I mean, I, I'm guessing that there's somebody, because of the way the, the roofline bends there, this is going to have some additional cost and complexity for the construction if it goes this way? Is that more or less right?
Nothing, nothing significant.
Okay, that's good.
Kind of relocates the um location of the hips at the back and has a little bit of a shed section. Other than that, um I don't think, I don't think that, I don't think they look. The, I don't think the aesthetics are quite as good with, with that version. Um, but um, it does meet the twenty six feet.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, yeah, I just wanted to point out for everyone, uh, appears Mr. Strathde is the architect for this uh design.
Yes, sir. Yes.
I believe we can have a bit more back and forth with him on the design after public comment is closed. Um, so i- is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this matter? I don't see any other hands up at the moment. Give it a few more seconds. Okay, oh, we have a hand for Dee Davis.
Temporary mute you. And Dee Davis, I will give you permission to speak. You have three minutes.
Great. Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Yes, um, just very quickly, I just wanted to um, make the same comment that the previous um, Roberta had made about the people that live on the west side of the street. Um, this would be the second house uh now that is building up a second story and is blocking the view of the bay um for everybody on the west side of the street. So um, it is uh not something that, you know, we've been here twenty years and, and now all these houses are going up and with second stories and blocking the view. Um, and so just want to make that as a comment. Thank you. Yeah, if you go down just a little bit further on that street that you were going to, you'll see the on the, on the east side, if you turn there, you'll be able to see a house, keep going. Yeah, so um no, you have to keep turning to the, to face the bay. You're on the west side there. Okay, right there, that house right there now has a second story. Um, so it's blocking the view of the people on the west side of the street. Um, we never got any kind of uh notification that they were going to put a second story there, but it's a second story now as well. So all those houses on, on that side, one by one, they're putting a second story up and blocking all of the bay view for the people um on the west side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, any other, uh, looks like we have another hand up. Um, David Stafford, Stafford, sorry, has a hand raised.
I'm giving you permission to speak. You have three minutes.
Okay, unmuted, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, this should be, should be quick. I was, I was at the previous iteration of this meeting discussing four sixty Chestnut and one of the comments I made back then is that this is, although this particular project blocks a percentage, maybe, you know, fifteen percent maybe of the view, leaving a, a nice eighty five percent. I was uncomfortable with the idea of it, of a precedent and the previous uh commenter pointed out that in twenty years there had been uh, there seems to be a, maybe a, a, an increasing trend towards uh making substantial additions on the east side of the street or west side doesn't matter quite as much, but um I, I, the comment, in response to that comment, like the precedent has been set, was said, uh, so with that, my, my response to the idea that well, we've already started to green light these projects that go beyond the existing zoning regulations for height. Um, it's just a matter of going through the process. At that point, what, what is the significance? I, I would guess this is an open question uh that doesn't need to be responded to right now, but what is the significance of those zoning restrictions if it's, if it's, if ultimately you get to, you can, you will get permission to build your addition. Um, the objections of anyone whose views are blocked, there's no legal statute that says you have a right to a view that goes over someone else's property. There's, what it, what is the, what is the purpose of the existing regulations? Now, I think I'll stop there. Um, and, and uh, thank the, thank the presentation, which again was really, really well, well done. Um, bye for now.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Uh, any other comments or speaking time from the public? I see one other person who hasn't spoken yet, um, but yeah. Okay, um, I think I would like to make a, a motion to close public comment.
Second.
All right, if we could get a uh roll call vote, please, on that. Hi.
Vice Chair DeRazo.
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'm.
Commissioner Kuhn.
Hi.
Commissioner Leffin.
Hi.
Motion passes seven zero zero zero.
Commissioner Biassadi, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to throw this one to Michael Lawfling. Michael, you know, based on the comments people have been making, I think the first thing we should do is would you mind reviewing our view ordinance or lack thereof for the public?
Sure, uh, yeah, this uh city of San Bernardino does not have any view protection ordinance. Um, so there is no, no requirement um for uh, for views or respecting of views. Um, however, I did want to comment on uh the last speaker's uh comment about uh third story additions and violating the zoning code. So um, as the commission is aware, uh, when, when the architecture review uh guidelines were adopted about over ten years ago, um, it, the, the municipal code was also updated to set various triggers which allow, allows people to do various types of additions, um, smaller additions um with only staff level review. Um, so the, the, the addition of a third story is just one of the triggers that puts an addition into uh the purview of the planning commission through a use permit. Um, so it's not a, a violation of the zoning code. It just um it requires a greater degree of review by the planning commission. Um, I do want to note in this situation, um and you'll notice from what, uh, from Christie's presentation, that the front half of the addition is actually just a two-story addition. So if the um applicant wanted to uh do uh, and a, a second story addition with the same square footage, but yet uh also in, uh, move it forward closer to the street within the front setback. Um, that, that actually, and it would have been within the floor area, that actually would not have triggered um, any type, a third, a review of a third story, but the visual impact of it would, would have been much worse. So um, again, um, the, the, the review requirement uh for the third story is, is just to allow that extra uh scrutiny. The, the planning commission certainly can take into consideration uh views and privacy um as part of the decision. Um, but again, there's nothing in the code regarding uh protection of views.
Thank you, Michael. Um, any other uh questions or comments from the planning commission to uh either the staff or um the architect who's present on the uh proposed design? Go ahead, uh, Christian Harmon.
I, so you, you are, the, the applicant is requesting approval of the original design and the, the alternative has been offered. And so the planning commission has the option to just approve the alternative rather than the original. That's the okay, just want to make sure that we're clear to, I mean, I it, it really does not seem to me that this difference in design is going to make much difference to the views, given the way that it shaves off the back rather than the side that actually faces the people who have the views. I'm sort of, I think it's very, it was very generous of the applicant to offer it, but it's not clear to me what benefit it really adds in any case. Um, and then, you know, and as you noted, they could have, without even triggering discretionary review, done a wider addition pushed forwards to avoid making it a third story. Um so it's, it does seem like the original design is fine to me.
Thank you, Christian Harmon. Any other commissioners uh with comments or questions? Mr. Biassadi, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I didn't sit on the architectural review committee for this one, but I'm just curious, looking at the design from the front facing part of the house, the trim around the garage door seems more bold or excessive than the, the rest of the house seems rather plain, but then there's just quite a lot going on around the garage doors and the windows and stuff. Does anyone remember anything from architectural review about that? Or?
Yeah, so I was a bit confused about the garage initially because I didn't realize that the uh car stacker went upward. Um, usually I'm familiar with them going into a pit. Um, but are you, are you referring, well, I don't think we had any comments about the roof type, the window type or the garage door type. Uh, is that what you're referring to?
No, it looks more like there's some sort of like molding or some sort of like um grayed out feature around the windows in the doors.
You're talking uh basically at the bottom of the windows? There's that kind of darker line?
No, there's a line going across the top of the window.
For the chair?
Oh, I see, I see.
Um, Commissioner Biassadi, what you're seeing is the stacker. It, it, that's internal framing.
Oh, okay, then I, then never mind. I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Kuhn is correct. I can see they're calling on a glue lamp beam header over the window on this uh drawing and
Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Also, the side, yeah, six by six post. That, that's right. There's some structural overlay on these uh, a few drawings. So thank you, Commissioner Kuhn, for reminding us. Uh, any other, other comments or questions from uh the commission?
Through the chair.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Johnson.
You know, uh, looking at all the components of it and I really appreciated that um, that the architect took that time because there is a cost to that. It's an additional cost to create more plans. And um, and I think that I want to acknowledge the fact that they took that time to to make that happen. Um, I do appreciate also that they meet, that they have presented a position of what their preferences and I do support um, um Commissioner Harmon's uh points of view in that area and, and also um, I support the um original plans.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Leffin.
I, I appear, I appear to be the third commissioner who, who feels the same. Um, I think that it doesn't provide any benefit um, really at all to uh utilize the the revised plans. And I think also it's, it's a more, it's more attractive architecturally um to, to keep it the way that it was originally designed.
Thank you, Commissioner Leffin. Um, I'll just go ahead and say that um in reviewing the uh first architectural sheet, uh, the roof plan is overlaid on the site and that ridge that's seven inches over the limit is really short. It's like two feet long of a ridge. Um, we're probably talking about maybe, maybe a foot of width that's over the limit. Uh, if you look at it from the front, uh, six inches on either side of the, the ridge probably. Um, so uh like others, and as I mentioned in the A R C meeting, I, I didn't have a um problem with them exceeding the height limit by only seven inches for a very, very small segment of the roof. Um, so I would uh, you know, if the, the applicant, the architect and the homeowner would prefer to stick with their original design, I think I can support that based on just how little uh the, the overage is on the roof height and for both just seven inches total overage and a very small width, since we're talking about a very small ridge. So any other comments or questions? Commissioner Leffin.
Yeah, I, I just forgot to mention, there had been another question about the uh, the lift, the parking lift and um though I'm not familiar with this particular lift, um, if it is noted in the plans, um you can actually go on YouTube and put in the model number that's specified in the plans and you can actually at least what I discovered in the past is you can actually watch it being used. They have little commercials and you know, they have the lady who goes and puts her little car in and um, that actually can be helpful to help, help uh understand how it works and what it looks like.
Yeah, I will second that. I'm, I'm working on a uh residential multi-story project in Palo Alto right now and it does have a stacker parker and the YouTube video from the manufacturer animates all the movements so you can understand how a car gets in and out and whatnot. And so they're very helpful, um, if anyone's curious. So, great point. Okay, uh, any other comments? Go ahead, Christian Biassadi.
I, I'd like to echo my fellow commissioners' comments that we're making just now. Um, it's a good design. And I, you know, looking forward to, or looking ahead at whether we approve it or not. I just like the public to know that I am very cognizant and concerned about the view that they may lose and I am sensitive to that. So it, making this decision that would is not being ignored. So I, that's, just want to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Biassadi. Okay, I'm uh, not seeing any other hands up. Um, would uh, any of the commissioners like to make a motion at this time?
I move that we uh approve architectural review permit A R twenty two zero one one and use permit U P twenty two zero zero seven, allowing the residential addition uh resulting in addition of a third story with height exceeding uh restrictions pursuant to section twelve two hundred zero seventy uh based on findings one to eight and conditions of approval one to twenty nine. I will second that.
Great, thank you, commissioners. Uh, if we could get a vote, please.
Chair Madden.
Hi.
Vice Chair DeRazo.
Hi.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Hi.
Commissioner Harmon.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson.
I.
Commissioner Kuhn.
Hi.
Commissioner Leffin.
Hi.
Motion passes seven zero zero zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that is the last agenda item regarding public hearings. Uh, next we have item eight. Conduct of business. Do we have anything uh on this uh, this issue? Staff or anyone else?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. I'll move on. Uh, item, agenda item nine is items for staff. Uh, do you guys have any items for us to consider?
Uh, no.
Okay, moving on. Uh, item ten, comments from uh members of the commission uh that uh we have not, or you'd like to bring to the forefront.
I'm just going to somewhat humorously observe that I appreciate the infomercial for the parking stackers. Now I'm feeling like I need one in my own garage.
Yeah, they're pretty slick. Okay, I'm not seeing any comments from members, uh, on, uh, anything not on the agenda, so, or, or new items. So, uh, that brings us to adjournment. So, uh, I think our next meeting is, uh, next month. This time, I think I misspoke last time. I realized we had another meeting quite so quickly, but, um, I think we are adjourned and thank you, everybody, for your participation. Uh, thank you, staff, and thank you, public, um, for your, uh, important comments. I, till we see you again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
February seventh. All right, later.
Yes, yes.
February seventh, thank you.
Okay, at this time, the meeting has been adjourned and we will be pausing, excuse me, we will be stopping the recording. We will see you again on February seventh. Have a good evening.